Let's go ahead and call the meeting, Lord. I want to certainly thank each and every one of you that have come tonight. We've got a pretty long agenda and several guests. We're going to take this time to welcome our guests, welcome to our meeting tonight. And we're going to have a pledge of allegiance and then Brother Richard DuBlack is going to come and give our invocation for us. And we appreciate Richard coming tonight to do that. But let's have a pledge of allegiance. I want to ask William Mitchell to give his allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's an honor to be here. Let's bow for prayer. Father, as we humbly come before you, Lord, we pray today that your will would be done, Lord, that you would touch each mind and each heart here, Lord, that you would direct their path, Lord. Lord, we pray for our city, we pray for our communities, we pray for our town, Lord, that you would be glorified in every decision that this council makes. Lord, we love you and we thank you for it all, and we thank you again in Jesus Christ's holy and precious name, we all say.
Amen.
First thing tonight we have is a public hearing concerned land and water conservation fund application. What we have is a public hearing to determine, thinking about having a project on our Badger River that could be adjacent to the Muntzware property. And through this land and water conservation fund, there's opportunities to get a grant or 50-50 grant that might get us a way to have access to the river, which is something we've been very interested in, and especially if we can get a grant to pay for half of it. So at this time, we'll have any questions on that, and if not, we'll go back into business session. So I'll just give them to...
Nathan is here and Heath Reed is here. They can answer any questions concerning the project.
If we apply for this and we receive the funds, what is the time limit on us using the funds?
The question was, what is the time on using the funds? The major restriction if the project is selected is that construction begin within 180 days of the grant. And then generally, there's a two-year window for the construction. The application is under consideration now, is actually pre-application. Usually, ADECO will take about 90 days to review those and will determine whether or not the application score is high enough to proceed to what's known as the second-tier application, at which time they request additional information. But that is a good indication that ADECO is favorable to the application. The overall timeline for the project from the initial application, pre-application, excuse me, deadline of September 2nd to having the grant agreement in place is approximately 12 months. But you should know something about whether we'll proceed to that second-tier application status within about 90 days.
And then we... Let me just make sure I understand this. If we proceed to the second tier, then once we're approved or the grant is funded, we have 180 days to begin construction?
Yes, that's correct.
Can we use any in-count on our part?
Yes, sir. In-count is also eligible. It just has to be documented and submitted by ADECO.
Mayor, has the budget been... I mean, we don't know how much the project costs at this point.
I've got a total cost, which we'll get into, is a total cost of $100,000.179, which we got 50% of that, or up to 50,000, we would hope, the 50,000.179 would be our balance that we would pay. Now, like, Heath, I mean, like, Nathan said, there could be, and it may not be that much, that's the proposal that he has, Heath Reed, and it could come in less than that, couldn't it?
It's just a nestling.
It's just a nestling. All we'd be doing is applying, you know, if the council wants to apply for this grant. We don't have to, but, you know, if it's something that you consider doing, then it might be a way of getting a good project. Much less of what we'd do down the river.
And it says on here that it is to construct river access, including an access road parking, a ramp, and retaining walls, and a pavilion. The parking, how is that going to tie in with any other projects that we do there at Muntzware? I mean, how big of a parking area?
Parking area for about 20 cars, but this would not be upon the level where the Muntzware building is at now, it would be closer to the water, just right above the 100-year flood station.
It'd be a total separate project that would be tied in with any other development at the park. We could incorporate that, wouldn't we? Would it be separate from everything else?
Claiming we'd put the pavilion and parking as close to the water if we could get them to play out of the 100-year flood zone.
Any questions at this time in this public hearing, Lord?
Is this open to the public?
Yes, sir.
Is... I guess, forgive my ignorance here, but are we looking for input from the public on what the plans would be, or just the cost, or what? I don't understand the exact format here.
Well, we're just looking for public opinion on this particular project.
Can we... Is there a way to look at the project plans and see what some of the details?
Well, this would be a separate project, just like I said, that would be separate from the rest of the property there.
Right.
It would be, you know, to look... They're already getting the river. They go in there all the time, right there at the bridge. We would be coming on the city property just a little bit further, on the horse side of the property, and having something there to have access to the river, because there's so many people that are trying to use it now, and have a place that people can park, pavilion, picnic table, or something like that, just for that one area, which would not be by an acre or less, is that correct, group?
Yeah, probably less than that, I think, I believe.
Anything else we do with that would be, you know, as a major plan, if we did a waterpark or a building, or a walking trail, or a ball field, or anything else, we'd still be on that property, but just that one acre that we need just for access would be all that we'd be for.
Yeah, I understand. I'm very supportive of it. I just, I went back and looked in the last two papers for the public meeting notice and thought maybe there'd be something that I could come down, pick up the plans, and go over it.
There's not a master plan in hand.
There's not, there's not always anything?
We have an idea in our office, as far as having that inside a big master plan of everything. And we have some stuff in office that shows some water parks, I mean, not water parks, it shows the ball fields, and walking trails, and things like that. This is... The reason this came up this fast, Heath and Nathan met with me about, on July 22nd, I think, when we had our meeting. We had just a very few weeks to come up with something that might be good for this type project, outdoor recreation project, had to be in by September 2nd. The time is one reason that this has come, you know, within just a few weeks, to come to this point. This is a project that may be funded, because we have it to have to end by September 2nd. We won't meet again between now and September 2nd.
Heath? Can you tell us, let me find my points, what all is involved in this?
It would include a pavilion, a small parking area, a concrete ramp, a concrete sidewalk leading from the pavilion down to the water, and then a concrete ramp into the water.
And it is handicap accessible, and all that's going to be?
Yes, yes.
Any bifurbs? Bifurbs included?
No, just an open air pavilion. At this point, all we've done is preliminary cost estimates, we haven't done any plans, so all that can be worked out. We just had to get a cost estimate to give for the, to go in with the grant application.
Well, that's all we've done, we haven't submitted no plans for this.
Those won't be done until after the grant's voted.
So our share, this, assuming that we give the entire 50,000, our share is $50,179.38, and that includes all of your work?
Yes. If you're selecting engineering, that would include engineering and grant numbers.
And Scott, you're going to check in to the insurance.
That's right.
The only thing that concerns me is we have such a potential there with the Muntzware property, and we have so many ideas that have been thrown out, and I'm afraid that it might turn in just to a hodgepodge if we just rush in and say, oh, this is a great idea, and we have an opportunity to get this grant, so let's do this. And then without sitting down and having a master plan of what we want everything to look like, I'm just afraid that...
Nathan, is this the total amount that we can apply for?
The ADECO portion is capped at $50,000.
All right. Okay, so, and...
What if you have a $75,000 project, you could get $30,000. It's up to 50,000.
Right. But what of that 50,000 could possibly be, when like an extra vest, that could be toward impound services, that the city could provide, if we get it?
I'm not sure. I mean, you got to have set a point.
Well, I think that's probably in the making. It would take some away from that 50,000 the city would owe, would it not?
Yeah, if it's something that we'd do.
Or slide through? Can we do that? Mike?
Heath.
Actually, our original cost estimate was a good bit higher, around $150,000. And we talked to the mayor about taking some of that out of the city, doing some of the site prep work. This cost estimate is mainly just the concrete parking lot and pavilion. Taking a lot of the things out that you could do in kind, you know, I think you would have to do those in kind of in addition to this $100,000.
Most of this is on the cost estimate we wouldn't be able to do.
As to your question about the master plan, we do have six to nine months from now before we actually even start any actual work on this, and there's time to incorporate that into a master plan if that's what you want to do.
I just, you know, I just feel like we need a master plan and a goal, not only for the Muntzware property, but also for the recreation center property. I know we're going to have to do some changes and some different things over there, and some things that have been suggested, that the top lot be moved, and this be moved, and the tennis courts are going to have to be completely redone. And I just think we need a master plan for both sides, and decide what's going to be kept on what's now the recreation center property, and how the Muntzware property is going to be developed. And like I said, I think the potential there of the Muntzware property, to have something that is unique, I mean, it's just, it's there. But if we start putting ball fields there, and all these different things that don't match, there's not going to be any cohesion, and it's not going to be a unique property, it's, like I said, it's just going to be a hodgepodge. It's everything that didn't fit somewhere else.
If we don't apply for this money, that's just going to be that much more that we're going to have to spend. I don't doubt that adequate plans cannot come into play. I'm concerned, well, I'd love to have the money, and we may have to put some with it, but I know what you're saying, and I agree, we do need plans, and we do have them to apply, do we not?
We do.
And the one that I saw that came over the computer today...
We got to draw on this, though. Just didn't have this. And my thing was just, as far as the timeline, this can be incorporated in the master plan, that wouldn't be a problem.
Well, I've heard that there is a plan out there for the property that does not contain ball fields and waterfalls. It's a whole separate plan. No, I've never seen it, especially so liberal. So, you know, I'd be interested in seeing that. I've also heard that there is...
Listen, I've never seen it. I've never seen it. Oh, what you talking about? Have you?
No, there's, I mean, there's a group working on the river project, it might not have all of this, but that's not for here. This is supposed to be talking about land and water conservation fund here, so...
Can I ask a question, this is set tonight, City Clerk? Are y'all, are y'all going to, even if you were to not do this, are you leaning toward not allowing people to access the river right there?
Why not? I mean...
I would just like to see a master plan, and if we put them in there, we've got them out somewhere.
I know what you're saying, but you, you know, you asked about the liability, and I was like, well, we own the property, and people are going in and out right there, whether or not we do this project, y'all decide to do this or not, people are still going to go in. Is that wrong? Is it wrong that they're going in there?
I don't know. I mean, if we're...
That's right.
...have it publicly open?
Mike?
I mean, why not have a place that's built for that, just specifically for that?
I think it'd draw a lot of people.
You know, it'd draw a lot of people.
There's not a lot of other things that are going to fit where this project's going to be, so I don't think it's going to...
It's not likely in the way of anything.
Plans up.
Mayor, you mentioned to me, I guess it was about a year ago, that City Crews had already been working down there to make it more accessible.
We have tried to, yeah, and we wish our dad made it easier, but that's on the, you know, right away next to the bridge. But this would be as a project, actually on our property off the roadway, where we could have something specifically designed just for that. You know, and I don't think we take away from anything else we could do, and I think with that, we just have to incorporate it into our other plans.
And a grant, if you applied and the grant came, you don't have to accept the grant?
That's right.
All we're doing is... You could take it, turn it down later, if you decide not to do it?
Nathan, is that correct?
Yes, that's right. You could always decline it if it was, if it was open.
If it was open?
If it was offered, if it was approved, you could decline it or something.
We're going to...
Just tell you now, if we got to get off the ground as soon as we can.
I thought that would be the day, though. I'll get to get this, the one sand drain, because I don't own 100% clean, I cleaned once about...
And I'm saying this is a 50, 50, so we know...
Somebody's money, it's our taxpayer's money.
That's right.
So if we get this, and it's, and for whatever reason we decline it, how much money are we out, is that going to... Are you, I mean, are y'all still in the process of working the plans and doing all this while we're waiting?
We don't have any plans.
Okay, so you're just sitting?
And I would say that there are layers of planning that are involved in a site like this, and a master plan is a wonderful idea. But what I think Heath and I are talking about, what Councilman Mitchell was talking about, is what the plans would be, construction drawings, design drawings, which would show grades and slopes, and how much actual fill needed to be moved, and locations, and roadways, and so forth. That actual design work would not commence until after a grant agreement was in place, and then that would be reimbursed 50-50 for the grant. But in the preliminary lead-up to actually submitting the grant, and until it is approved, the city is not being asked to provide any funding for that type of activity. So you wouldn't be out anything if it was declined or if it was approved, you can see the term of that anymore, except...
All right. Let's go ahead with the meeting. First item on the agenda is the recommendation to approve a meeting from our last meeting, is there a motion to approve that? Is there a second?
I'll say.
Hall in favor, say aye. Second item is a recommendation to approve the resolution 2014-814 for the City Hamilton Land and Water Conservation Fund application in the amount of $100,179. And if funded, the city's share will be 50,179.38. Is there any questions before we take a motion, second on this?
Okay, that's saying that if we did it, we're automatically going to keep it?
Well...
No, it's...
Just to do the application.
The way that's worded, it says if funded, the share will be, so that's assuming that we're going to...
Well, the swing is going to be $100,000, yeah.
Might not get?
It might not get, and it might not be that much.
But I think what she's asking, is we can turn it down, like...
If we go this way, we can't turn it down.
The resolution would...
You can change that wording, because that's just, that's the way I'm, anyway y'all want to, that's the way I worded it on the agenda. I was, what I was doing was, the reason I worded it that way was to, I was trying to let you know that, you know, your, the city's share, share would be...
If accepted by the city, the share would be, instead of if promoted, the share would be...
Could it say if promoted, though?
Why not? Just leave that out.
Okay.
The resolution is to apply...
That's right. The application.
Yeah.
Because we have to score, this thing has to be scored in this term, you know, we may not score high enough to get this project.
But it just say recommendation to approve resolution number, City of Hamilton, in the amount of $100,079.38, period. That's what you're applying?
Okay.
And then strike the other.
Okay.
I just added that, trying to clarify.
You're trying to clarify how much our share would be, is what you're doing. Okay.
There's a motion to accept this one. I'll make a motion. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Any other discussion? Call in favor, say aye.
Number three is a recommendation to approve resolution number 2014-814, be approving a contract between Goodville and Kegwood and the City of Hamilton for water sewer improvements. Fourth Avenue Northwest, water, spring sewer, Mitchell Hill and Park for tank repair, $96,700. This would be our part of the engineering on the project that Heath and Zarae give us proposals on, and it's one of the things we used in our proposals the other night for the bond money, and that's what our part would be. And Heath, if you would, if you want to explain any of that to us tonight, a little better.
This is a small part of the bond issue you brought in at your last meeting, so you can see with the water sewer portion of that project. I was all right with getting the sign work. Would not be able to take bid before your bond waiting's in place anyway. We're probably looking two or three months at the time. By the time your bond waiting's in place, we'll be ready to start everything, to take bid on the construction part of this.
This is project you've already looked at?
Yeah.
That's how we got it?
Yeah, we've not yet, but last, six or eight months.
All right, is there a motion?
So this is just for you to oversee all these?
No, design and construction inspection, yeah.
No, we're just overseeing and...
That's right.
Total project of all of them is about a million, something thousand, plus total of everything, on all this project put together, is what we had a couple weeks ago that we used as an example.
You know, and I thought, I mean, we voted to get the money last time, but we didn't vote on the, it was one of these things. I mean, you gave your proposal, but...
Right. But the intention was, was to do some of these projects, not just get that million dollars to do nothing. This was part of the projects that, how you got the money, the amount of money to be borrowed. This was part of the projects that we used as examples, come up with that amount of money to do these projects. In my opinion, we need to do those that were used as an example, or not as a reason for the project money.
This 96,000, is that all these added together?
Yes, correct.
I for cleaning people's water up, and redoing these tanks, we've got to do that. Probably need to spend that much more of water.
Right, did you not say that some time ago when we talked, that these tanks, particularly one of them, had never been used, and feel like it's been redone, cleaned up?
Which one was that, Ron?
Mine.
We still use that, or you are still using that?
Both.
We pumped to it, you just get tired of it. You are not helping us a little bit there? It's on Earth Island, they're near.
Is there a recommendation to approve this resolution?
I'll make a move.
It's our second.
Oh, sir, go ahead, Greg.
Very excited. Any other discussion? Call in favor, say aye. Thank you very much. Number four is a recommendation to approve a resolution 2014-814, see the municipal agreement between the state of Alabama and the City of Hamilton for project, fridge, this is the bridge project, 0171, SR171, old Badger Bridge replacement. And this is what we got this Thursday from Mr. Brown. It's just a, it's a resolution to do the project with the state and the city, to allow them to work. But that's, we already approved the resolution with Goodville Hills and Kegwood on utilities. And this just goes along with the state highway project. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
As I said, why don't we go on?
Heath, do you know that that project might start this fall, or they're going to let this out this fall?
Utility, start this fall, construction of the bridge, probably...
2015.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Did they agree?
Yeah. Any other discussion? Hall in favor, say aye.
Did you get that, David? Number five is a recommendation to set a quote from Emerson Garage Doors for $40,000 for counter shelters at the softball complex. Complex over there at elementary school has all the windows around the complex, so any fuckin' light in school tonight can, or need to be replaced. What we want to do is put these counter shelters, the doors that are rolling down, be a lot safer. They're going to replace those and replace all the wood around it, this kind of exposed thing you might...
The woods that are there are made out of wood, and we got break-ins two or three every year, year in the season. And this would probably cut out a whole people being able to get in there.
And that's the only bid we got, you know, for this project. We had, got a couple people looking, and nobody did this type of, show the doors, all that'd be doing is replacing windows, and that's not all we need. We need something that's a lot more secure, if it's easy, doors go up and, pared and put them back down, we're not using them.
Is this coming out of the red button?
Yes.
Is this coming out of the red button?
Is there a motion to do this?
I don't like the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Okay, Frances. And this has been meaning to be done for a while. Any other discussion? Call in favor, say aye. Thank you. Number six is a recommendation to change your next council meeting to September 2nd, on Tuesday, the first will be Labor Day, unless we want to be here on Labor Day, we need to go to Tuesday. Is there a motion to change that next meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Okay, ten, thank you. Hall in favor, say aye.
Scott, I'm going to let you explain this next. It's a recommendation for me to consideration of ordinance number 2014-7, to provide for the issuance of 9 million, 975,000 general obligation bonds, and 1 million, 530,000 tax bill, that general obligation bonds for the City of Hamilton, and tell us if you want to, you may need a lot. The bonds were sold last week, and this is all that, the 9 million and the 1 million, 500,000, is all put together, what we refunded, refinanced plus the new money.
That's right. The new money was approximately, was 8 million...
That's right, the new money was approximately, was eight million dollars, and then it's approximately three and a half on the two thousand and six bond that we're refunding.
Correct.
And the immediate question is, why is there nine point nine of general obligation series A, the one point five taxable general obligation warrants of series B? Reason they had to do it that way was, uh, there's a ten million dollar cap on the IRS on bank qualified, to be a bank qualified bond. So what they ended up doing was, on that eight million new money, putting it all in the original, and then splitting the refunding of the two thousand and six, basically splitting it in half, putting it so we can fit under the cap on ten million, and then putting the excess over into taxable. That still gives us a six percent savings on the two thousand and six, um, refunding, which is a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, uh, savings that we had on the two thousand and six. Okay, questions?
Do I vote?
Yes, I'm gonna keep my questions.
Then we have to have an attorney sent to vote on the ordinance.
That, that's right.
All right, is there a recommendation for me to consideration?
I'll make a-
Okay, Tim, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Lynn. Any other discussion? Call them, favor say aye. Thank you. Recommendation to approve this ordinance. And they will be at the next meeting, uh, I think, uh, Rod Cantor or Reed Cattonard will be the second.
That's my understanding, that would, Reed would be there for this meeting. If I'm not mistaken, the closing date was going to be September fourth. All the documents finalized and everything.
So after September fourth, we would have access to the money?
Yeah. Everything's been sold.
Okay. So recommendation, is there a minute, uh, motion to approve this recommendation?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a, is there a second? Frances, second. Okay. Call them, favor say aye. Thank you. Next part of reports, I don't have any reports at this time. And I'm gonna ask Kenny Vincent, if she would, I've seen her talk to daughter banners at the last meeting. And this has just a little question or two, but I appreciate you coming tonight. Explain what nineteen hundred dollars is now. Sure, he appreciates you being here.
I stand alone.
Okay.
Um, as Mayor Webb said, this is the second time that I've been here on this project, and I'll run through it again. Um, at the present time, the Downtown Hamilton Association is considered a five oh one C four business, it is not a charity. Uh, we serve as a standalone advocate organization, we help assist local businesses and individuals. We promote revitalization of the downtown area for our center of business, liability preservation, promotion of activities and events that will build only a stronger local economy and contribute to the well-being and the vitality of our newly redesigned Downtown Hamilton. There are eight board members, I have those listed for you, but I'll read them out. There's Jane May as secretary, Barry Mixon as a member, Richard Kitchens, a business owner downtown as a member, Dylan McCreeless, Eddie Lyle, business merchant member, Karen Wheaton, Drew Vado, and myself. We have a board seat vacant, if anyone wishes to fill that, I'll be glad to discuss it with you. Under former leadership back in twenty twelve, our association assisted downtown merchants and others in collecting letters, um, in favor of this plan. Uh, our association went to Great Lakes, and I, myself, and Jane May did a lot of footwork, and if you don't believe me, there's the guy to ask, we're right there. In Coherc with MACOG, uh, we received that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, which is what kicked this whole project off. So therefore, with that being said, um, the money that was received is not the association's money. I've been asked if we received that money, I have no money in my account for the association, except what we sold in banners. The two hundred and fifty thousand dollars was strictly for the city, had nothing to do with our association. Um, uh, going on down my list here, the banners that are presently hanging in Downtown Hamilton are highlighting of the Hamilton Solars House. I spoke with, uh, the Royal Society Commission, um, they were in agreement, I didn't have to do anything there. Um, I, I personally went to other organizations and spoke to them and asked for their input on the banners, and what they thought of what we had pre-drafted. Um, I had a lot of comments, uh, all great, and so therefore, that's how we ended up with the green banners and the white ink. Uh, I have been here before and gave this spiel, but, uh, I presented a color picture of the rough draft of the banner that's there hanging now. Uh, I have a color swatch, I always get color swatches on any fabrics, and I try, I will try to do presentations if we continue to help the city get these banners. Um, on your paper, there is a list of ten things that I brought forth to the council the last time that our association came forth with this project. We are not paid, we do this all voluntarily, and I would be glad if anyone wants to help, come join us, we'll, we'll take all we can get. Um, the nineteen hundred dollars was the cost that we asked for the city to buy one set of twenty-three, which there's twenty-three poles downtown in Hamilton. We buy one more, which is twenty-four, in case we have a damaged car accident, storm, et cetera. So therefore, when we purchased our set, they were twenty-five hundred dollars. I only asked you for nineteen hundred. I, I feel like all the decorations that belong to the city that go up on the old poles will no longer be used for these poles. They're not, they don't fit, that won't work. So if you want Christmas decorations downtown, then we need to order the banners. Uh, we, we gave you a slim of a margin as a cut price that we could get based on a one-color banner and a one-color spring, screen print on that banner. Four colors to put on it, higher price it goes. So we were going to absorb, our association was going to absorb the amount over what we asked you for. The nineteen hundred dollars was for twenty-three, that's an entire set from pole A to pole Z, to that downtown area. So with that being said, um, you know, we did do sets of four, and we call that a seasonal set. So if John Doe Merchant number one down here wanted to buy one for every season, they could do that, and we gave that a discounted price also. I have order forms, and myself and any board member are open for questions. Um, Amy Nix, Amy Nix in the city hall has a list of phone numbers, she'll give you our numbers, no problem there. Um, we did a walk-around downtown, and I think a few of y'all were with us, there was a, a whole group of us. Wade and I discussed the banners then, the hardware was already on the pole, we didn't have anything to do with the hardware now. We had to come in, buy a design page, set page, and we had to order banners based on that hardware. That's the reason that we have the price that we have when it comes to these banners. I can look at fifty different little magazines and catalogs and talk to twenty people, but based on the hardware we have, we only have a select variety of banners that we could order from. We have to give specifications and send pictures. So therefore, that's another reason our banners cost a little more than forty-five dollars and twenty-five dollars, and they're not this big or this wide. They actually are three foot, they don't look it, but they're three foot long. Um, and the, the reason that we use the company we use was because out of all the companies I've called, they call me back every time. Any question, they email me, they text me, they call me, and to me, customer service was the number one reason, and I think any of y'all would jump on that if you got that kind of service and the timeframe that we were given to get these banners in. Now, we have sets two, three, and four, and we would like to order all those by, you know, by, all at one time is what I would like to do. So I also included on there a sheet that tells you what we have sold and what we lack as far as the numbers are concerned. Um, actually, I gave y'all a sheet, left mine out, but there's a sheet that says, we've sold fifteen, we like eight. Uh, if you'll look, there's a total, I think, of twenty-nine banners that we are still trying to collect money on. Uh, I will still be collecting money tomorrow, when I get up, I'll be going to pick up somebody's check. Um, this is a very time-saving project, and I'll be glad, you know, to let somebody else help me do it if they want. But right now, I'm here in front of you, and if there's questions, let's, about the banners, let's resolve them, and, and I'm asking tonight for the city to purchase a set of twenty-three, um, otherwise, we're not gonna have anything Christmasy, or holiday, or decorative, or, or patriotic downtown until we, you know, I think the city ought to at least buy something, because they buy all the other Christmas decorations.
Kenny, I think you've done a great job. Multiple hours, you and Jane May and all the others on this board, and I support you a hundred and ten percent.
If it weren't for all the tourism in this city, or any city, there wouldn't be any coming down, so.
So what you're asking is for nineteen hundred?
Nineteen hundred dollars, is what I'm asking, I was asked for a motion about-
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's no way to put any, uh, Christmas decorations on these poles, any-
Not the one you have now.
Not we got, on the different rotters?
I know.
Okay, cool.
But are there any that would go on these? That we checked into that?
Well, I'm sure there probably is, but you're still gonna have that big gap where the, the hardware's attached to the pole, so.
That was part of the plans when it was made, that's what would go up there.
Yeah, that was, that was not-
That was a decoration.
So if we-
Our decision, that was already in the plans.
Yeah.
If we buy the remainder, you won't be selling anymore to the public, the sales will stop.
No, we still have twenty-nine.
Get on.
Vacant, so, your twenty-three will get on. Do you see the page in there where I listed second set, third set, fourth set?
Yeah, the second set you need nine, the third set you need eight, so that's seventeen, so that would fill, complete those two sets.
And there's a fourth set called patriotic.
And the fourth set, you need twelve.
Mm-hmm, total of twenty-nine.
So you're gonna like, but what I'm saying is, nobody can buy, nobody can buy a set of four.
Not now.
After nine, if we do this, nobody, no business could buy a set of four.
Correct, we're, we're only gonna have four sets, and those are the one we have, and the ones you're looking at. Because first of all, we have city employees that have to go out with me at six o'clock in the morning, and pole to pole, hanging those banners. Um, grateful for Mike Johnson, wonderful job, him and Mr. Burgett also, couldn't have done it without them. But, you know, it's something that-
So what are these gonna say at the bottom?
The bottom is sponsorship, that's up to y'all, I just didn't, I mean, my suggestion was, just don't put City of Hamilton on every one of them, you know.
So what's the price if we don't put four on them? They're just, what?
And you won't have that hanging down.
Right. Well, I mean, there's some like that up there, not, so what's-
There's one.
What?
But there's something going on.
I've got a question, what, where, where does this excess money went? I mean, if you bought a set for twenty-five hundred, uh, if I added that up, right, if you brought in four thousand for it?
It's in that account, and one, at the end of the year, when we, when you order all three of those sets left, the remainder of that money, we intend on using for other projects that we have on our list, which are new garbage cans, or, uh, new planners. I mean, it's not that we just stopped with the banners.
Okay.
But, I mean, we can, but that's what our intentions are.
People's got them up there now, it's got their name under them, they, they, they've got, they bought other seasons.
Some of them bought four, we had quite a few, at least a dozen more that wrote me a check for all four right off the bat. And then there were some that just bought one, and then there were some that bought one and requested that it went home till the Christmas, uh, season. They wanted theirs home at Christmas, and then they specifically asked for a certain pole, and I told them that's fine, as long as our merchant didn't request that pole in front of their business. The merchants get in front of their businesses first.
Any other question?
Or, Sam?
I just feel like that there's some businesses out there that wanted to purchase these that have not had an opportunity to, and for the City of Hamilton to have twenty-three flags scattered down through town that say, whatever, uh, I think that there's some businesses that might want their name down there.
It was in the neighborhood.
Have you contacted, uh, all the businesses, or have they, they have had the opportunity to get to you, have they not?
Richard and Eddie have helped talk to the businesses, uh, Karen Wheaton, I, I went and talked to several other businesses. I gave most of them, uh, that I could get in their business a order form, so.
Well, how about you let me go talk to a couple of people, and if I can sell some more, that'd be great, and if I can't, or if I can, I'll make the motion next time to do whatever, depending on how many sell.
I mean, just buy, if you can sell more, buy more.
When do you have to order these, to be able to get them by Christmas?
They require at least, I believe she told me, a thirty-day turnaround period. So we kinda got home the last time because there was a holiday that I did not count for in there, and so, uh, we had to pay expedited shipping to have them here in time for our grand prep.
Hopefully that pays.
So September the second will give you time for, uh, Fall Fest on the last Saturday in October?
No, it will need to be before then. The last Saturday in October?
Yes.
Yes, it will.
Okay.
Yes, sorry.
September the second, sorry.
There's still gonna be six of those, if we buy these now.
Six complete sets available?
No, no.
See, that's Monday, I think there's some people that want all four seasons.
Well, you can't get all four, because they're already sold out.
All four seasons are not available, that was, you know.
Okay, so they're-
Well, the warranty on these are three years, and then if we keep four sets, there is the opportunity that we may add a fifth set. But our thinking process was keeping the man-hours for the city low. Well, once we went through the first round, it took one hour to hang all of them, between me and Mike and, uh, the city employee. So that wasn't a big factor. Uh, doing it at six o'clock in the morning was probably the biggest factor for me, but, uh, we got it done. So, um, you know, we could add a whole entire set of twenty-three if the Jerry Brown Arts Festival wanted Jerry Brown Arts Festival-
You could add more.
On every one of them.
It doesn't have to be three or four seasons, it could be-
Right, we could add-
Six seasons, as far as that goes.
We could add more seasons as we go along, but right now, we started with four, to keep it simple. And we did a one color to be in, less expensive for everybody, so.
All right, you give me two weeks and leave me an order form, and then we'll see what happens next time. Clear?
Would you like to be on the board? We have a vacant seat.
Okay, I won't be on the vacant, you got the order form right there.
I do, I didn't make a call.
Any more questions?
I do like the green color, of course, I didn't think I'd like that, but I, I think that's fine.
Well, we have, you know, we, we added the extra expense for the UV protectant, uh, they are fade, mild UV and rot resistant, it's a hundred percent non-rain acrylic fabric. I mean, it's Cinderella fabric, it's top-notch, so, you know, I, I thought, if we're gonna spend this kind of money, we want something that's gonna light.
Absolutely.
That's just how I look at it. And they're not work, that we put into it, so, thank you.
All right, let's go back to- What, number eight? Okay, just on the ordinance or about, no, just on ordinance, because you had a map sent about, okay. Number eight, recommendation to approve ordinance number two thousand fourteen dash seven, it's coming our chance, we need to rebut on that, and, uh, so Timmy can abstain on this one. So would there be a motion to approve this ordinance number two thousand fourteen?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Craig. Is there a second?
I'll make a second.
Okay, Lynn. This is from Scott's recommendation. Any other discussion? Call them, favor say aye. Any other statement?
I'm saying.
Okay. Now, let's go back. Okay, Jessica. Have just Jessica Crumby here from Great West Financial Retirement Planning, and, um, thank you for being patient with us, you drove here from the hospital, and you met with, I believe, Tim Alvin, right, the VOC team, as I correct?
Yes, she's, she's been down a couple times.
You're a financial planner?
Actually, I'm a retirement counselor for a state important-
Actually, I'm a retirement counselor for state employees, cities and municipalities. And, um, I'm with Great West Financial, the State of Alabama Deferred Compensation Plan. It is also a four fifty-seven B plan. But the main reason I'm here is because there's legislation that was passed not long ago that allows now cities and municipalities piggyback on this state's half billion dollar plan at no charge to the city. So that's the big, big key point for you guys. Um, and if you guys will kinda notice this first page that I gave you that was the plan comparison, this kinda gives you an idea the differences between the two plans, what we currently have and what the state is also offering you, which you can kinda see on why it might be better for your city employees. But I'm gonna kinda go on to a couple of key points that are not on this and then also go over this. And then, of course, if you guys have questions, don't hesitate to interrupt me. But first of all, something that I think is really important about this that I wish they would put on this is we offer before and after tax contribution on our plan that RSA one does not. So you can contribute Roth or traditional. It's not cat like an IRA at fifty-five hundred. You can contribute the IRS limitation of seventeen thousand five hundred. Then, of course, we have the special catch-up provision if you qualify. So that's a big point. Another thing is, it's not, I think, is huge, is you can actually roll over any qualified money. So if you have retirement money elsewhere that's in a 401K, an IRA, or an annuity, then you can actually roll over that money into this plan and consolidate your retirement accounts, which is another big plus. Also, with RSA one, you're limited to two investment options. Um, with that, you have over thirty. So you can go as aggressive or conservative or everything in between, just depending on what you prefer. Um, also with us, we have unlimited daily transfers. RSA one, up until recently, was one transfer per year. Um, now they've changed it to every ninety days. So what that means to you is, let's say you decided to wake up one morning and said, "I'm gonna be super aggressive today and I want an aggressive portfolio," and you decide to do that, and then you're like, "I lost sleep. I can't handle this." Move it back to fixed. You do not have that option with RSA one. You have to leave it there for a certain amount of days. With us, you can do daily unlimited transfers, move it back and forth as frequent as you please.
Do you meet with each individual employee? Is that how you come?
Yes, I do. I actually, um, I will meet with everybody and do a retirement projection. So, the nice thing about what I do versus RSA one as well is I talk to everybody. I figure out not only when they wanna retire, but how much it's gonna actually cost them to retire. We're unfortunately retiring in a poverty because people, not only are they not putting back enough money, but a lot of people don't know how much to put back. Um, and I actually calculate everybody. And of course, everybody's gonna be different because everybody has different financial needs. So. Um, also, we offer a true fixed account. RSA one does not. Our true fixed account is principal and interest, excuse me, principal and balance guaranteed. Interest can fluctuate quarterly, but of course, you never lose principal or interest. Something else, the state put a provision in, or excuse me, put a clause in the contract with a in loan service feature. Of course, we don't ever want people to take out loans for the retirement because you can't borrow money to retire. You can borrow money to fix a car or a roof, but you can't go to a bank at sixty-seven and say, "Hey, I need two hundred thousand. Can I borrow some money to retire?" It's not gonna happen. But the state wants the employees to know that if there is an emergency and that you need your money, you have it available. You do pay yourself back the principal and interest, however. It can be subject to double taxation. The IRS really likes that. Again, we don't prefer it, so. Um, and then, of course, we're registered by FINRA. Um, that's what the RSA one is not. And just to kinda break it down, FINRA kinda regulates, everything we do as far as training, any kind of investments has to go through some type of compliance. Um, the compliance makes sure that we do it in the best interest for you guys, not necessarily. So just because this super aggressive fund over here might be doing amazing, we're not gonna put somebody that's retiring in two years in this aggressive fund. They could make it up if the market were there. So FINRA regulates what we do to make sure it is in the best interest for each and every one of you. So, um, and also the plan of the glance wire, this just kinda gives you a program overview, excuse me, that tells you your contribution limitations. Um, that can change yearly, of course. It usually goes up. Your investment options, again, I just told you, you guys have several to choose from, rollovers. It just kinda gives you an overview of how the plan works. Distributions work the same as pretty much any other retirement plan, except that this is a nice thing too, is if you ever separate service from the state, the city, or the municipality that you work for, does it matter age? The money is one hundred percent liquid. There's no penalty. So think of this as a penalty-free retirement account. Um, of course, then you have the typical IRS mandatory distributions of seventy and a half. Something else that's nice about this plan is you're not required to move it. When you retire, we will continue to grow your money. This is what we do while you're working for the city or the state.
Let me take it back on that. Another reason this is beneficial to city and state employees. The pension with state, with tier-one pension, they only have to work twenty-five years to be fully vested and be able to draw their lifetime income benefit. 401Ks, IRAs, really anything else out there, you have to be fifty-nine and a half to get your money out without paying a ten percent penalty. Four fifty-seven B plans do not have the fifty-nine and a half clause. Are y'all familiar with RSA one that the city's currently offered? Okay, this plan, this is the State of Alabama Deferred Comp Plan. It's been offered to the state employees for over thirty years. Legislation is now allowing y'all the options of adopting. The plan has really been the exclusive plan for the state employees. Um, like she said, there's a lot more investment options. There's five asset classes versus two, with international, small cap, mid cap, and large cap stocks. We do not expect city or state employees to be financial advisors, know how to pick and choose their own investments. We have a managed account, uh, service where they can elect to have their money professionally managed for forty-five basis points, which industry average, that's very cheap. It's less than half of one percent. So they can be completely hands-off. We, and this is between us and somebody at Merrill Lynch, we can calculate the pension. Not many people know how to do that. And that's what we do one-on-one. We sit down with them, show them what their pension's gonna replace. With twenty-five years, it's gonna be fifty percent of their income. Not many people are gonna retire on half of what they make now. Most of them make about eighty percent. So we calculate and show them what they need to be saving per paycheck in addition to what they're contributing to their pension. Uh, we have lifetime income funds that function similar to annuities, but you actually never annuitize your assets. So your, there are many account balances goes to your beneficiaries. Another benefit, y'all as elected officials can actually participate, or you can't participate in RSA one now. Y'all can contribute the same seventeen thousand five hundred contribution. Um, we have a fifty-plus catch-up, which is twenty-three thousand a year, and we have a special catch-up, which is thirty-five thousand a year for the last three years you're working. Are you in the plan? Okay.
Wish that I got in it a whole lot earlier than that idea. A lot of people taking cruises on this must be wrong.
And that's our job.
This is in addition to what you're taking out of your weekly check, your monthly check for retirement. They would be contributing so much out of payroll.
Exactly.
A week or from how they pay.
And what's really nice about this plan is, you know, when you go with people that are making, you know, they haven't seen raises in forever. They're making twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars a year, barely making, you know, what they make. It's hard to get people to actually put money back. But when you say, hey, we're only asking you to just start out at minimum. And when you get comfortable with that, bump it up. And our minimum is ten bucks. I mean, with, with before tax contribution, that looks like eight dollars out of your check. You don't miss eight dollars when you don't see it. And people don't realize just how easy it is to contribute. And when they get those, those quarterly statements, it's a whole nother gratification. People are bumping them up. Five, ten dollars every time I see them. So it's, it's a really great plan.
The biggest benefit is that it's free.
Yeah, it's free.
Cost the city absolutely nothing. Y'all have zero fiduciary responsibilities. The state handles all that. Um, if y'all were to go out to a third-party provider and want to create a separate four fifty-seven B plan, you have to provide fiduciary oversight, which usually involves attorneys and a lot of, uh, financial analysis. There's a joiner actually, I think you put on top of your packet. That is really all there is, the city's, uh, their application to join the State of Alabama Deferred Comp Plan. Whether anybody does it or not.
How many of you have participated to make it?
That's entirely y'all.
Fifty employees and?
We can set up a payroll slot and nobody ever use it. But granted, any of your, anybody that's in RSA one, we have, they offer a bond index, in a, in a large cap equity index. We have the same two funds, except now they have thirty-four more to choose from, and they can have somebody professionally manage their money.
Are you currently working with other students close by or in our, you know?
Um, I'm working, I've worked with the city of, I'm actually working with the City of Most Shores right now, but I've got the, um, the electric board and the water board joineder right now. And I have got a meeting with, um, the City of Most Shores mayor next, next month.
City of Florence adopted the plan. Um, they were one of the larger plans to adopt it. And then this is not to replace RSA one. This is just in addition. Basically, y'all get to offer the full retirement benefit package that state employees receive. Um, we've had a twenty-three or twenty-four since last year adopt the plan, which I think from around here, it's constantly, constantly here, right?
First hour about eight years ago, in the nineties, I guess, it's either Birmingham P D or Jefferson County Sheriff's Department. Was involved in it, I think, and that's where, I just think we owe it to our employees to let them make a presentation to, to them and, uh.
Let them decide.
Let them decide, but it is a real good thing. And I'd like to see our employees, you know, get a board if they want to, because, like I said, I, I've seen some of my friends that's retired that's been in longer than I am. And, uh, it's really made a difference.
And as Mr. Hocken probably knows already, I visit, I'm acquired by the State of Alabama. Once you've joined her, I'm required to visit your cities or whomever's joined the plan, state agencies. I'm required to visit you at least annually. Um, I come to the City of Hamilton a lot because I've got a lot of state agencies that I deal with around this particular area. So.
Yes, you got more just a, a D O C. You got transportation.
Board of Education, anything like that.
No, we don't have the Board of Education. They're actually gonna be considered county.
Correct. There are some state employees that work for Board of Education. Sorry.
No, you're good. Absolutely.
We do have some that they're just, Board of Education is kinda, when there's city, county, and state.
Yeah.
So we have, it's offered to all state employees in any city that you're in. There's currently a lot available to counties.
Maybe one day they'll change, but as of right now.
So what do you do, Jessica? You come, set a time up to meet at City Hall, or we can get with different department heads and their groups, because some may not be able to meet in the mornings, some afternoons.
I typically.
Leave it up to each?
Yeah. I typically, like I did with the D O C, I stay pretty much from five A M. to about three. So I'll stay throughout the day just to, just to make sure that I meet with everybody. I'll get, I would in touch with a contact, send up a sign-up sheet, and just people put their names. If they can't dedicate a time, that's fine. I'll at least know who wants to meet with me that day. Uh, I prefer to do group presentations. I know it's not always easy to do that, but I prefer to at least try to do a group presentation initially to who can make it and then who can't. And I'll just do individual points with as well.
It usually works best to go to departments, do a general group presentation. And then we do ongoing, I mean, really financial literacy courses, educating state employees on different aspects of retirement planning, uh, investing. Actually had a state employee that, a month ago, that sent her retirement check back to the state, what she got from her pension, and told them it was wrong. She retired before she even knew she was drawing. So, and that's our job to make sure they don't do that.
People think twenty-five years, that means I'm gonna retire. Be good. Well, that means you're only drawing about fifty percent of your income at most. So, most people don't know that. So we're just here to make sure that everybody knows where they're at before they actually start walking out the door.
I think we would, together, our two, all come here for a presentation, take about four months, morning, middle of the day, afternoon, whatever. It'd be up to them if they wanna sign up or not, but it is.
Jim, that's, that's fine with you.
It is good.
Did you say?
Relax, woman, like employee.
Did you say that you meet with the group? But I understood you say you met with each individual.
I do both.
After?
Yeah.
After you meet with the group, then you meet with the individuals?
Yes.
Well, I prefer that, if you case to meet with the individuals because everybody's needs were not the same.
Absolutely. I just do a group presentation just so people won't think that I'm trying to sell insurance. They know exactly what I'm there for. I'm there for your retirement. I'm an estate benefit. I'm, I'm a part of your benefit package. Because a lot of people are, they misunderstand when I say that I'm not from RSA or RSA one. So I'm there to, I do the group presentation, just to do a program overview to kinda explain to them a little bit what I've explained to you today on what the program entails, how much contributions are, and then at that point, I meet with everybody individually.
And this is pretty in-depth analysis that we run for them. Um, maybe really calculate the pension, we'll calculate social security, show them what their income gap is, we'll include inflation, uh, rate of return based on their asset allocation, and what they can expect. It gets, it gets really.
So you do a worksheet with each individual?
Right. We do. It's software that we have. And, and that's really the, the difference between us and RSA one, in my opinion, is the one-on-one education they get. And seeing it on paper always helps too, and showing them, you know, if I say this today, seven years from now, it's gonna be twice that. And that's getting a lot of the younger people involved in thinking, they don't have to say for a year to fill their fifty-five. Don't blank twenty dollars.
Yeah, we run into that a lot, a lot. So, yeah.
Thank you for coming. We'll, we'll get with you, um, I got your information.
Yeah, if any of you, any of you all have any questions, don't hesitate to call me. I think you both have two of my business cards, each one in the packet and one by your paperwork. So, don't hesitate to get my business card out, or if you want to ask questions, don't hesitate to call me either. So.
And I would say the next, the joiner is deferred. That's an application to the state that they have to prove. Usually takes about two weeks. Then we work with your payroll, whoever, the city clerk, whoever handles that, payroll center, um, and get them on board.
So we go ahead and do that.
Y'all could do the joiner agreement now.
That's, that's, uh, state.
Yeah.
It's just a signature, face the city's, uh, application.
Then, then we could do the, uh, presentations.
Right, once we get the payroll set up.
Yeah, once everything's set up, I can present, I can present at that point. Well, thank you for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I thank you for coming.
I sure did, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, the joiner?
So we got these.
There was just one. If y'all wanna go inside, it's fine. If y'all wanna wait.
It was on top of the, an actual poll number.
One page front and back. There.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it. Actually, you made your official. This is that, the joiner agreement.
We probably need to get someone from RSA one also, because I've had employees date down that they were interested in RSA one.
Yeah, RSA one, I think only will come if there's so many people to present to. They won't just show up.
And they won't, actually, and that's another big difference. But there, we're fully securities licensed to actually work one-on-one with them, as they're, they're not.
I just wondered if, I, I just know the ones that asked me about it, they're interested in going states, we kind of, I said, they're not.
Yes, we can tell them about, we can kinda tell them about both. I, of course, can enroll them in RSA one, but I can kinda tell them the difference between us and RSA one.
Well, and this actually is the state of Alabama.
I mean, I've talked to the state.
Okay.
And they told me it's the opposite of what I heard tonight, so I'm kinda curious to.
Who'd you talk with at the state?
I've got a hard number, but they basically said that theirs was also taxable. You know, and you said that theirs was not, uh, taxable off the top.
No.
RSA one does not have a Roth.
Yeah. Yeah, they don't have a Roth. They just have a traditional, like you can do the before-tax contribution in that sense.
Questions for Deanna?
Yeah, absolutely. And if there's anything else I can answer for you, let me know.
Employee that's, that's talking to me about it is interested in going through them. And I didn't know if y'all were gonna do this. Does that mean that?
I can look, I can look, I can look at both of them. Right, just like a state.
Presentation.
Access to both.
So we'll have to, if they disow, we'll have to have a payroll deduction, I'll have, we'll have payroll. We have a regular retirement deduction that has to be sent to, uh, V R S. And then we'll have, uh, retirement deductions that, uh, we will have to do resend to them. And then we'll have to set up another one for RSA one.
If they wanna go with that.
Yeah. So we'll have two more that we'll have to.
No, probably if they, if they, they won't, they'll, they'll either go to Great West or RSA one.
And that's two more that we're not doing now. And that's two more that we're not doing now, payroll deductions. Because I don't have any one in either one.
Yeah, yeah. But like if you joined, you wouldn't join both of them.
No, no. But I'm saying that if anybody chooses Great Western, out of Idaho, then they will, I'll have that deduction and then I'll also have, if someone chooses RSA one, I'm just saying, it's going to be a lot, be a lot more like.
Well, as far as the benefit of the employees.
Yeah, you definitely want people to be able to have a, that bridge, that income gap that they're going to see in retirement because unfortunately pensions are not going to cover majority of the, the employees' salary. So we definitely want to make sure that we can get them the benefits that they need to retire.
Like I said, I wish that could have been long time ago.
Well, I appreciate it, Mr. Hawkins. Thank you so much, Mayor Williams. Would you like me to wait? Do you guys have any questions for me afterwards or? Do you want, would you like to talk over the?
No, no, maybe later.
Okay, yeah, let me give you a call, let me give you my card, then you can call me anytime.
I've got your card.
Just write it on there for me and your name.
Yeah, I've got some questions.
Yes. I do have twenty-two counties, it helps.
Move forward, this time I want to ask Mr. Patricia Gallo come give us an update on what the real project and Patricia, appreciate you being a piece of this, I've been here a long time. And I've been out looking at your property two, three times. And if you would just come up. Bring your engineer with you and just let us know what's, what's going on in your project. Sure.
Since the beginning of this project, it's actually launched quite well. I've added a bunch of new additions to the park. And thankfully, the upper part of the park will be opening for Labor Day. So I'm getting somewhere, slowly, but I'm getting somewhere. Just handing you a copy of one of their blueprints of the park. In those blueprints, it does not include the educational posts, these smaller amenities like the pony rides.
Now you have to come from main highway. We've got all the city tank approval, county approval, local approval for the RV parking spots. She's started construction in that area. She's also started building a parking lot on the bottom. And then the new construction of a road from the beauties would be from this part.
You're going to have to come here and park on this side, so I'll, we're waiting this way. This part up here, and this is the stage, eventually it's going to be a whole. This is great, I'll be right back. This is great, so you're going to enter here. And this whole top area is going to be open for Labor Day holiday. After this, they're going to down, they're going to be up a golf course. So while this is open and going, this range is around the drop. And in the meantime, there's going to be an open field. There's actually more space than what it looks like here on the map that will certainly be a festival for events that they want to take place there. And the park will actually be like off. The time schedule is, well, like I said, this is going to open for Labor Day and.
What's going to happen?
I'm going to, the upper part here, I have time, we'll look up RV sites for the most part, walking on the rest of it. But the RV sites will be open, the stage will be there, it will be open as well. I do have it done to plan for that weekend. And then as soon as that happens, I'm moving right on to putt putt golf course. And as you know, things can hold it up, such as weather. And I'm only one person, it's not like I can go build it myself, so. The whole projected plan will be fully in place by next season, for May. That's all I can promise, I'm not going to be unrealistic, I figured I could get it done quicker, but I'm only one person. So realistically, come next season, there will be a water slide, there will be zip lines, there will be a pond to swim in, a playground over here. And this will be a full blue. Also, in addition to this park, I will be doing charity, charity events taking place here, which all the money will go into Hamilton Public Schools. I will be providing a list of school supplies that the children need to attend school next year, out of my own pocket. So that is what I'm doing. Come next year, next school season, I'm going to be having charity events that will provide all the school supplies of the laundry list that the children need to take to school. I'm going to single-handedly provide that out of my own pocket for the community with this park. I, I do donate to other charity organizations, but I strongly believe if you put more towards one certain thing, you can make a bigger difference. And number one difference to me is education. I have three children and I believe these schools could use a little bit of help and I would like to do that. My park is also going to have a lot of great amenities for children. I've got a bunch of pumpkins growing right now, I've been babying them because the, all the children, oh, the pumpkins, the pumpkins, so. We're going to have the pumpkin patch in October. That will be going, I'm going to have a fall festival with haunted hay rides and I'll list the full details. It's just been a little hectic trying to get everything going and then I'll, I'll let you know what's going to happen in the fall and I'll publicize everything. But I've been working very, very hard, it's pretty much just been me on my own and it's been pretty strenuous, but it's getting done. And I'm probably going to be employing at least twenty people, so it'll add more jobs to the community as well. I do have a broad range of ways of advertising. As you can see, I have posters that I've placed all the way from Jasper Clearing to Mississippi. I've networked with a lot of business owners from here to there. I've also been networking with some of the adjacent property owners that are interested in expanding the park into their property to provide nature trails and horseback riding as well. I'm in the process of working on that at the moment. So in the end, this could end up being close to a forty-acre park, right in the side city limits. As far as advertisement goes, I also am a Good Sam's member, I'm an R B-er myself. I have went to over sixty-five resorts and campgrounds. And I'm going to list with Sam's Club AAA A R P discounts. So I can really publicize this park and bring people into the community to see and want to stay here and want to take a vacation. So that's what I've been up to over on that little hill. We're working on also cleaning out the river and networking with people up further to the Buddy Hatchie. That way we could kayak, canoe, enter to from point A to point B, point C, and then back around again. So I've been pretty busy. So projected plans for the whole park is this whole park will be in place as of next May.
And this is not for campers, this is.
For everybody.
Anybody that wants to come back.
Yes.
I've had a lot of people tell me, we didn't putt putt golf, we didn't putt putt golf.
This is completely for the public.
So you've got it all right.
My only issue that I have is, this property has been not easy to develop. I've taken a piece of property that was considered undevelopable and I have developed it. When there's a will, there's a way. I've taken dirt from here and rock from there and put it there and we're actually, we're making this happen. So each and every task I accomplish, I just praise the good Lord because it wasn't easy, so.
You didn't pick an easy piece of property.
Now that you know what, but I, I never do anything the easy way, that's just how I am. But it's going to be one of the most beautiful parks that you've ever seen. I take great pride in everything I do. This park will be well-maintained and it will definitely be something wonderful for Hamilton. It will represent Hamilton in a very, very good way.
I have a couple of questions inside of the area, where you were talking about the other improvements with the boat ramp earlier in the meeting, how far is that from this? How far apart are the, are these properties?
That creek runs, it's a river, it's not far away.
The creek is probably not that far.
I know exactly where it is. All the boys go fishing.
I mean, I just wonder if you're acquiring grants, this is the first time you've seen me, but I just wonder if you're acquiring outdoor activity grants for the city, is there any room for help for her? And that's just a question.
That particular grant just probably, I'm sure it would be on city property.
It would have to be on city property.
That, the land and water conservation. You might look into and see, here, you've got a great project.
I, I've worked very hard on it, in, in all actuality, this was not the original project. This was not the original plot, I had to come up with this in like three weeks. Due to the fact, some of the mishaps that have happened on my property, I had to reconfigure the whole entire thing. The property has pretty much a mind of its own, it'll let you do what it wants to let you do and that's. So, in, in the end result, this is what we have.
You're working with a lot of rock formations, aren't you, the mayor, a lot of rocks and hilly? Let me ask you something, this may be personal and you might not want to answer it, but I've had it asked to me. What, how did you get interested in Hamilton? And how did you come about? Because you've got an accent and I know you're not southerner, so.
This is actually a funny story. I was actually interested in Florence. I, I lived in Winfield before, for quite some time, I've lived in Starkville. And I was supposed to purchase a house in Florence. And four days prior to it closing, it bottomed out, it couldn't have crazed. So, I had already sold one of my homes up in Michigan, I had come down here, I wanted to relocate to the south to give my, get my children out of the city and give them more of a country setting and a better upbringing. And so basically, I came over to this area and I fell in love with the house. And when I seen the house, I'd looked at so many houses, here I am, house bottomed out. And I found this house and I said, this is it, this is, I have to be here and I wanted the house and so here I am. That's how I ended up here.
That makes sense.
Man, is this, is this new bridge, is that going to hinder her anyway coming on Grand View?
That has been a concern and a question of mine actually, because my, the outlet, this is going to be a one-way easement that comes through and I, that has been a concern of mine with the outlet. If I go and I beautify my exitway, are you going to come and need to rip it up? And I've actually asked for the plans so that I don't, if I'm going to do something beautiful at the end, I don't want to interfere.
I'm not sure how far the hour into the plans, he's been here earlier, we could ask him, he's gone now. But we'll, we'll just have to check on it and see.
Because right now, as of this point, the road is, the road is kind of dangerous when you come around the curve, you cannot see anything. As you come around there. Another sign would actually be very useful, caution, people accident, you know, campground exit on the roadway. So people take a little bit more caution when they're coming around that curve.
Signs will be a problem, you know, when you get further in the project and that's our street.
And I've also requested on the highway for a turn lane. I'm going to have RVs coming in there very shortly and they're going to enter and exit off of Highway forty-three. There's a big enough space there, but it, it's going to be a little difficult. You need a little bit, you need quite a bit, think of the swing there, it's no different than driving a semi. That was just another safety concern of mine that I addressed in the past.
I'm sure that's something to stay high with, we'll have to get with you on that one.
Yes, yes.
You consider, well, leading on Grand View, so.
This is, that's really my only concerns. This right away here, it is a public easement that comes in here. RVs will be going in and out of this easement. So I don't know if something, some kind of caution sign, I just want people to be safe. And the other person that I'm networking with that would like to be a part of the park, he's actually on the other side of Highway forty-three. So when the nature trails go around and if he does get approved to become a part of the park, then it would go underneath the bridge instead of over top and then ride in and throughout the property. He doesn't want to develop anything, all he strictly wants it to, the nature to be preserved and it to be used for hiking and horseback riding. So that was an amenity I didn't think I was going to be able to have, but it's definitely a wonderful addition to the park. This makes it so now everybody, it suits everybody's needs. I don't think there's one thing on here, handicap access, I'm going to have golf carts that will, if somebody needs to get down, they want to go to the campground down below, I will make sure that is possible for them. The stage is going to have a ramp versus stairs, so everything will be handicap accessible in this, in the park.
Are you going to have any cabins, so I said something about some cabins.
Um, yes, I actually was going to have cabins, but due to the little mishap down in the bottom part of the property, I have to have septic systems. And I only have so much room to put these. Down in the lower part of the property, there's a lot of water. And me personally, I don't think it should be built on. So once I go to expand, I've already talked to another adjacent property owner. When I purchase that piece of property, that's when the cabins will come. But I do not feel the rest of the property is safe enough to put cabins on, that close to the river. Either in case of the flood, in case of flooding, insurance purposes, I've had to deal with a lot of insurance purposes. Or security guards, I'm going to have security guards during any kind of concert or event there.
It's been up to the bottom of that bridge before Grand View.
Yes, I, I'm well aware of that and I want to steer clear of that area. I'm actually going to be filling the one in, in a little bit higher to make sure that I don't flood out my putt putt golf course because it's pretty close to the river there. So later on down the road, yes, I plan on putting in more RV sites and cabins, but it's not going to be until this is finished. I want to get more amenities for people to enjoy. There'll be ten RV sites, there's lodging, so I want to make it more of a community place versus just strictly lodging. As a resident in that area, there is a big concern on the Grand View Drive that is in a blind spot. And if you're going to have RVs come out that way, that does need to be cleared up a little bit better. The RVs actually are not going to be exiting out that road anymore due to the fact, where this putt putt golf course sits is actually where the RVs were supposed to be sitting, right here. But it's not going to pervert to save my life and like I said, the ground is not, to me, stable enough to risk financial loss in it. It will hold the putt putt golf course. So I would rather play it safe than sorry and it's, it's just a better thing to do anyways, so it kind of all worked out for a reason.
I think with the concern of Grand View, you could always clear the right of way and then do a sight distance to get a safe speed limit and maybe just pull back to a lower speed limit if you needed to.
It's already twenty-five and it's hot and wet, so I don't want to miss that. That's wagon wheel traffic time. Maybe a speed bump?
From the side to side, you could post.
I mean, where I come from, they put a nice big speed bump in, so you're not going to fly fifty over a speed bump.
People just go fast.
A speed bump would definitely slow them down around that curve. Maybe not the first time, but the second time, they'll understand it's there.